And to the God for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I vote for me to be thankful to be thankful to add and improve in maintenance a well discussion and then we're gonna go into policy of actually that. Alright, so as far as the PFAS goes, um, one of the things that is urgent in terms of timeframe is to figure out if we drill in well, if it's gonna test positive for PFAS or not. Um, the quote for that is about twelve or thirteen thousand dollars. Um, that doesn't include hydrofracturing and casing and all that stuff, but we just need to know if the water's bleeding before we go ahead. Last year, we had a fund, like a carry forward, and we decided to put most of that towards last year's budget. But we have thirty thousand dollars left over. That's money that's already been approved to spend on the school. So we are allowed to take thirteen thousand of that and spend it on the well. Um, it means we have thirteen thousand less to carry forward into the FY twenty-five budget. And so the thought is, is if we can drill well and get it tested, if it tests negative for PFAS, then we have a plan going forward with the town, um, to ask for ninety, well, if asked for a hundred thousand dollars, that might go down to ninety if there's more to build the well. To ask for ninety thousand dollars to complete the rest of the scope of the work, which includes moving the septic, doing some trenching, building, building and, and everything that we've talked about for the PFAS situation. The reason that we wanna do it quickly, and I don't know if we'd be able to do it quickly or not, is if we drill a well and it tests positive for PFAS, then the scope of the project is gonna be widened to include the filtration system for PFAS. Depending on when we can get the well drilled and all that stuff, we might be able to know the answer before town meeting, which would actually allow us, not in the town report, the town report would already be printed, but at the town meeting to make some adjustments, adjustments to ask for the full amount for the PFAS treatment. Does that make sense? Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Yes.
Does anybody have the knowledge of the process to know whether we drill the well and it tests clean? Will it continue to test clean, or will that pocket that we're creating be contaminated in six months after, just by virtue of opening it up?
No, six days, six months.
I know, right?
No, it could be, I mean, we're taking a gamble. If, if we find PFAS in this well, the day we test it or two years later, then we're looking to spend another seventy, eighty thousand on their remediation. Um, so, yeah, I don't, I don't know that answer, and I don't know.
I don't know how important.
We're planning on putting the casing down farther, but if, if the pocket of water down farther is contaminated or gets contaminated, then, you know. So, I mean, are we likely maybe needing to remediate this in the future? Who knows? But we'll have room to do it, like, we'll have room in the house. Um, that red shed over there is gonna be replaced, so we'll have an insulated room where we can put the equipment if it's needed. So we're, we're doing the project with the idea in mind that we may need to filter it, and we're making sure that we don't do anything that means we can't have row or trenching or whatever to, to put it in if we need to.
I mean, we already have to do some work over there.
Yeah.
We can find spaces.
And this is the well that's gonna be on the far side of the field?
Yeah, like, kinda where you take the corner kicks over there, far. Right, any other questions? Any motions?
Did you what you said?
I'll make a motion that we spend as much money as it takes to drill a well in the corner of the field to see if we can get clean water for the bits.
Those are dangerous motions. Can we cap it at fifteen or something?
Let's cap it at fifteen thousand. Let's cap it at saltwater.
Yeah, okay. Fifteen thousand, okay. So is that a second? All right, any other discussions?
Nope.
All those in favor? Okay, um, so I will go ahead and instruct the selectmen that we have the funds for this and they can go ahead and schedule, and then they can talk to the school, um, because this should not impact the outside of, like, the, the day of the operations at school. The worst that could happen is they say, no, we don't want anyone on the playground of the fields for a day, and it means inside. Um, but they're pretty confident they can probably get the equipment over there after the school ends. It might not be the, you might have field, the stock field, but the playground won't be, um, impacted, and then at some point, another, after the end of another school day, they'll need. But if, if, am I right to say, Chuck, that if you have to adjust your day to accommodate the well drillers, that's okay?
Right.
All right, so I'll go ahead and get the ball rolling with the selectman on that, and they'll be in touch, and, um, do you need anything?
I just need the minutes to be, I'll look at whatever Tara writes up, because they're gonna go right to the auditor with this, because this is a special kind of expense that they'll want the minutes for, so we'll make sure it's right.
Being recorded.
Yeah.
Okay, then, um, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the second read of the JFBD Education Homeless Students, JFBD slash R Education Homeless Students procedure.
Second.
Second. And I think the only discussion on this is they used to have the words, um, students awaiting foster care in this policy, but those students are being taken care of by another situation, so we're not excluding those students. We're just taking them out of this policy because they're covered elsewhere.
DHHS has that responsibility now.
So, and it was one of the things we got, we just said, oh, they needed when they did the special ed.
The McKinney Vento review.
Read the review, so we're just kinda bringing this up to speed, or we're doing it quickly so that Kelly can just kinda shut that off for the rest of the. Any questions?
Nope.
All those in favor? So, okay. Have fun, Seth. All right, so Wes and I met with Peter the other day to go over some of this stuff. Um, the budget would not reflect any changes, but I think, uh...
I can share what they are.
Okay.
We'll discuss.
And if I can just say something first, um... Well, I think, me personally, as I get nervous about the time, I get more nervous. And, um, as I've been doing this for a few years, our budget has gone up and up and up and up, and I think it's probably doubled in the last ten years. Um, our towns are really good, and we had one year where, like, one of the selectmen didn't vote for it, but everybody else did, and it worked out okay, or maybe a couple of budget committee members didn't, um, so it was like three to two. And I feel like every time we do that and increase it by two hundred thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand, um, we're asking a lot. And so I'm at a stage, when I look at this and I look at the increase, that I feel like we need to be a little bit more diligent about questioning some of these costs and potentially coming up with savings. That's just me personally, so I don't know how everybody else feels. Um, but, uh, let's just ask a lot of questions and feel comfortable, because we are the ones that are running this through the selectmen next week. Now, part of the question is, is, you know, just natural normal inflation?
Or do we have a whole lot of mission creep, and I can tell you that, you know, fourteen years ago, I bought a car for forty thousand dollars, it's extraordinarily a lot of money for me at the time. Uh, that same car, sixty-eight thousand, so.
And the eighty-four thousand, has it doubled?
Uh, it hasn't doubled.
So that's.
But it's, but it's still a lot, right, percentage-wise? So part of it is, you know, a big part of it is going to be um, just inflation. And then other pieces of it, we're missing, I think, some things that we should have been doing, and we added and enhanced some things that, that are nice to, to you. So, I, you know, I, I go back to, I can't afford to do it, you know, right, because we do it too.
I agree, and I think we can do the school right for less money without cutting corners. And I think that if we're looking at running a school of seventy-three students three years ago, the same cost or more than a school of fifty-six students.
Yeah, but we have so many fixed costs, it's, it's not.
We do have a lot of fixed costs, we have some that we, that aren't fixed. So, yeah, there are some things in here that we cannot control.
So, I mean, if there's, if there's, how do you deal discretionary spending that came in, and sure, there'll be a thing to do, but the fixed costs of the bulk of what's going on?
Well, and it depends where you put, I mean, I'm gonna stick my foot in it all night, so, I'm just, you know, I, um, you know.
Sarah, do you have a number in mind?
Well, no, I mean, I'll be honest, like, the idea that we're gonna, so, right now, if you look at the back, it says fifteen and a half. We've discovered some savings, so I think that's gonna go down, and the way that I look at, um, this budget is, you actually think, and maybe it's cheating, you can actually take out two hundred thousand of that, because the PFAS cost of a hundred thousand are in our budget this year, but it's a different, it's, it's separate from our normal operating cost. The hundred thousand for special ed reserve is different. So, in my mind, if you take those two things out, you're then comparing apples to apples from this year to last year. So that puts us at about seven point five percent. Is there a magic number? No, but I would love to get below five, and I don't know if we've seen that for a while.
I don't know if any organization has seen that.
Okay, but so, look, so I get the idea, like, special ed's a nightmare everywhere, and not all organizations have seen it, but we have, we have fixed increases built into our budget because we're not in the negotiating year. So I think we need to look at this budget through the eyes of South Bristol, and some things are like, it's, it went up, so we can't control that, whether it's propane, like, you found out, you found some savings in electrical, which is great. Um, you know, some of our contracted services are gonna go up. And that just can't be the answer for everything. So we need to make sure that we're looking at the things that might have a different answer, and really making sure that we're a hundred percent behind those numbers that can live. And we might not change anything. And then it might get approved, or it might not get approved, and if it doesn't get approved, then we just put some more work into it. You know, if, if it gets voted down next Tuesday, it's not the end of the world, you know? And part of this also is a discussion, because part of the discussion about the special ed reserve, it's gonna be a discussion with the budget committee and the selectmen, because it's now in choice. So there are other parts of this that might be discussions, and that's why we're all part of this process, and why we don't have to, you know, it's, this is, we're just putting forward our best budget right now, and we're talking about it, and maybe it'll change, and maybe it won't. All right, Peter.
Well, I wanna just, just because we haven't talked about this, so, what we did talk about the first time we presented the budget. You know, we've gone through this number times, many times, actually, um, and we've kinda looking at tiny numbers to see if we can trim off a few cents here and there, a few dollars here and there to reduce it. But when we started this conversation in beginning of December, November, whatever it was, we talked about the fact that it gets down to positions.
Yeah.
And are you ready to cut, or, you know, conflating any positions? And remind you that in this budget, you're losing seventy-five thousand dollars in revenue for a donation of this to add a teacher for the last three years, that donation's coming up, but the teacher's staying in. That might be a question the budget committee asks, is why is that teacher staying in? Do you have one too many teachers in here? And if you have one too many teachers in here, that's gonna be the biggest thing you could consider before you go through all the small expenses. So you might wanna start just to make sure you're comfortable with the number of FTE teachers you have.
I am.
I'm not. I'm, I'm comfortable with the number of teachers we have, but I think that there might be room for discussion of is one teacher that's full-time down to four days a week? I mean, I think that there are ways that we can look at our needs and see if we can, you know, shave a day off, shave a day and a half. And I don't think, that's, that's my disappointment with budgets, is I don't think that those options have been looked at. And we're not the ones that make those recommendations, because we don't know how the school runs. Um, but I think that, you know, a day could be fifteen or twenty thousand dollars. And that's not, that's a percent of the budget. So I think that it does bear, yeah.
Do you don't think that we started doing that sort of thing, or we got a hiring issue?
I don't know. I really don't.
But, I mean, you know.
But, but it's, but it, what cost? So, I mean, no, I agree, I mean, you know, and.
You can't make a decision like that without something, a second, and a clear consequence.
I understand that, and we, we talked about that with the teaching principal. We decided that was too big a risk, but it still doesn't change the fact that we have fifty-six kids in a school where we have full-time principal, a lead team, a lead teacher, and lots of, lots, and even some subjects that other schools are not giving the time that we are. And I, and part of this is me finally after nine years saying this, you know, so you don't have to agree with me, but I, I don't think it's been looked at the way that it should, and to me, that's disappointing.
Yeah, something like, to bring that up.
I've been bringing it up for a while, I've asked.
I'm new to this.
No, I'm talking about this year, so I've made that request.
At the very beginning, so.
And the other thing is, we do have schools that are near us that might share teachers with us. Whether it's a half, it might even be a half day that we, we lose and somebody else gains.
You know, it's hard to use. Right, but, yeah, I mean, let's see, I, I don't disagree that seeking and pushing seems the right thing to do, but without specifics, it's I'd be very specific to start with those guys.
Yeah, it's not hard to see where they can, you know.
I think it's hard to look at that type of cut at this point in our budget.
So, it was, okay, no, that's fine, that's, I mean, I'm, I'm one person, so if you're comfortable with that number of almost a half million dollars for teachers, then we can go ahead and do it.
Well, if you look at the two pieces that are very difficult to change, it's, uh, regular instruction and special ed. And that, as Peter said, is a large part of the budget, and those, especially if the teacher increased, that's twelve percent, right?
The teacher salary increase, fourteen, yeah.
And that's something we agreed to.
What part of it?
The fourteen percent.
All right, we're shutting, disruption.
I mean, we're, when you.
Teacher salary, fourteen percent increase, that was a negotiation that we agreed to.
No, the, the, the steps, the steps and the salary are a negotiation, there's no question about that.
Okay, so that's sixty grand right there.
Which is nice that it's not seventy-five, so I'm thankful for that. My question.
And the, the second line, um, line thirty-five, secondary private tuition, I assume that's a rate that's set by Lincoln Academy? Yes?
Correct.
So that's a hundred.
It's actually set by the state for the living.
Okay, so that's a hundred grand more than it was last year.
Well, that's, that's not, that's, it's, it's students and increase, but it's not, it's, their, their rates aren't going up that much, that we have more students.
I understand, I'm just saying that that's a hundred thousand dollars of the increased budget, which we're saying is about, if we take out the two hundred thousand dollar tabs, right, we're saying we have, we have an increase of about two hundred and fifty grand.
Right, and.
And that's a hundred grand of it, it's just the fact that we're sending more kids to high school.
So that is one of the things that we can't change.
Right.
And.
Okay, so now we're down to about a hundred grand over last year.
But it's not like, it doesn't mean that last year was the target that we want. I mean, there's nothing wrong with being under last year's budget either, right?
Yeah, I, I would challenge you to find me the organization that is shrinking and staying alive.
It's, it's not a comparison. I mean, we have to do the best that we can with, with.
I agree, I agree.
You know, it's, you know, I challenge you to find, I mean, there aren't many organizations that are giving us, giving the raises that we're giving either, you know, so we are lucky that we're able to do that. Um, I think if you look at the I don't have it pulled up, um, like, so, what, if we wanna go down here, um, one of the things that I've been curious about is, is ten thousand dollars actually enough for our sub-line, because we're at six thousand right now. Or no, where are we? Yeah. We're at sixty-three hundred right now in January. Is that, are we, and, and one of the other things I wanna think about is if we're, if we're spending ten thousand dollars on a substitute line, that's half an ed tech too, right? Without benefits.
The health insurance, we're getting both of those, it says third of an ed tech or quarter of it.
So if we're looking at doing something like having library be switched to a principal responsibility, we could still keep the same staff if we had half an ed tech that was like a, a sub, right?
I don't know, I've never been in a situation where it's, with a school that didn't have any sub-line at all, and relied on just moving people.
Well, we might not.
That's theoretically, but I have not seen that.
Yeah, but I mean, there are schools that have full-time subs.
Yep. So, yeah, so what you're suggesting right there is remove the sub-line, remove ten thousand dollars as principals in the library, take that halftime ed tech and say they're a floating.
And that might not be enough, I mean, a halftime ed tech might not be enough to cover our sub-need, I don't know. But it, it's out, I'm not sure that ten thousand is either. It's just a, one part of this discussion. And if, if that's not done, then maybe it's, maybe it should go up to twelve thousand, if we're already at six thousand in January?
Different every year.
No, I know.
So.
We raised that originally.
We had that, I think we got it back in twenty last time, and I can't remember exactly, but I think it was higher.
You recommended more for Bristol, right?
Well, we raised that based on the lead policy, this, the new lead policy.
Yeah, that's not even, I mean, what, that hasn't been in place this year, and we're already, you know.
We anticipated it.
Right.
We discussed it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to leave it, I guess, um, but then it just struck me when I realized we were up at thirty-six, sixty-three already. For fear of being accused of nickel and diming, I'm not in favor of increasing the head teacher's stipend. I think we have a principal, a head teacher, and a lead team, um, and I think that the lead teacher job description um, can be narrowed, can, can be tweaked a little bit. I don't think the adds, add-ons are, um, realistic for our school, our size.
For line nine?
Don't expect, oh, I, I don't predict I'll have a lead team next year. It's funded by tier three, we have a pretty good chance of, uh, being moved from tier three status after this year. Can't guarantee it, we'll wait till the numbers come out.
Listen, I mean, I'd.
Just consideration, tier three pays for the lead team, I didn't put any stipends in for the lead team.
Right, so if tier three is leaving and we want a lead team, then we should have money and budget for the lead team. I mean, that should be part of the recommendations for this budget, right?
It's not part of my recommendation, do fine, school is small, it's a lead teacher.
But a lead teacher to lead team are different, they should, they hold different responsibilities, correct?
Mostly with that, I mean, we all work together, it'd be split hairs, so it's separated, but the lead teacher has a lot higher responsibility with the principals out of the building. That's the, that's the main burden that that person bears. It's different than the rest.
So there's no recommendation for lead team for next year?
No. On the west front, tier three, because then you need it to manage all the tier three expectations that we're.
So the head teacher stipends gone from seven fifty to fifteen hundred to two thousand in the last couple of years. And Sandy, you remember, I mean, this is something that they're gonna question understandably at the budget meeting.
Yeah. It certainly was last year.
Because it's, it's out of whack for the rest of the week, so really, that's the district, I believe.
How so?
More.
Three of them have assistant principals, or it's two? Three have assistant principals. They wouldn't have a lead teacher.
Your thoughts?
On the, we're talking, we're talking about the thousand dollars in line number nine?
And I don't think the burdens, they've been to have gone outside.
So, if, if we have a lead team that we need, the person gets it, and if it doesn't, it gets absorbed, right?
No, we need a lead, the, the head teacher is somebody who is in charge when the principal is not in the building.
Okay.
No, it's, it's somebody to be there.
Okay, and for that, they get three thousand dollars a year?
Well, they, two years ago, they got fifteen hundred, last year it was up to two thousand, and now their request is three thousand.
Okay.
So what was the escalation base, and why, where is, where is, where do you have to complain?
You'll grow as three lead teachers in this year's budget, two thousand each, and, uh...
And they've got about a little less than three thousand students than we do.
And if somebody walks into the school with a gun and the principal's not here, you're in charge, right? Three grand? I would want a lot more than that if that was my responsibility, even if it was for like one day, or.
All right, so what do you propose we pay them?
Hmm?
What do you propose we pay them?
I just leave what's in the budget.
So you're, so when, when the budget committee says, why has that position gone up from seven fifty to three thousand dollars in three years? You're gonna reply?
Because the position demands a lot more responsibility than it has in the past.
Have, I mean, if somebody could come into a teacher's room with a gun, and they'd have to know what to do, but their salaries haven't gone up.
No, it's not the room, right, it's the school, and you're in charge, you're in charge of all the children in the school for that event, right? You're the, you're the person who's responsible.
Yep.
This was approved last year at three thousand, by the school.
And then we switched it to two thousand, so now, you know.
Conversation with the select board, but my case still stands, I'm not gonna have a lead team next year, presumably. And you put something where it's, if you don't have a lead team, it's up to three thousand, and if you have a lead team, keep it at two thousand?
I don't think that, that the, the head teacher typically has had any more responsibilities, whether you have a lead team or not. I mean, if something happens, okay, I'm not gonna go, we're gonna, let's just move on. Is everyone comfortable with two thousand? Right, okay, so we're moving on. All right, um, what's the next? Okay, so the only thing I have to say about line two-three, which is instructional supplies, is, um... It's we don't wanna jump around too much, but when we look at the stipends for the Barnes Fund, we have out and club, we have garden clubs, we have D club, and we have summer garden club that I think could be paid for by the nature, the Ed Meyer's nature fund. Is there any reason that that can't happen?
I don't know. I don't know what's in it, I don't know, is, that, wasn't that funded by the onion festival or?
We're saying that the onion fund is gonna spend, is gonna fund the middle school book club, but according to the, um, latest student activity fund, we don't have enough for that, but I don't know if that's, if that's re-up, I don't know if we get a donation for that per year. But the activities fund report that we got in January ninth was that the Ed Meyer's nature fund has two thousand, seven hundred dollars.
That is entirely uh, granted, empty the doors, you see.
Okay, so that can maybe be used to fund the garden club and the D club and the summer garden club?
It's not what we're written for, I have to look into each one, some of them have a little little room, some of them are very, very specific.
Okay, do we have any? Okay. So we don't have the answer to that. Do we have any updates on, we think we need all the sports stipends for next year? Sports stipends for next year.
We do. This is something I'm aware of.
Well.
You have something in mind that you can, don't have enough.
Really low, so are we going to have two basketball teams? I mean,
It's just, it's just, you take some money from the burn spend and put it into instructional supplies.
No, I'm thinking something opposite.
Take some money out of instructional supplies because we have yeah, money.
That's what I mean.
Okay, sorry, yeah.
Use burns, you lower this by saying you have money to burn.
And it's not, it's not drastic. You know, when I, the admirers nature fund has a specific purpose, and so when I see that there's almost nine thousand dollars in there, I thought that it can be used for these purposes, but if it's not really the admirers nature fund, then we can't use it for funding the nature-based clubs that we have, then we can't use it to fund the nature-based clubs that we have. You know, if we can't predict within a moment of fifty-six that we may not have a basketball team, then there's just okay. So keep that line as is.
Do, do, do we ever do this in such a fashion where we prioritize it? So in the event that we didn't have a basketball fund, we can owe the money to a different authority that would make, didn't make the get cut, is there a line that says, hey, this is how we're going to spend this hundred thousand, but oh, but if we happen to miss these things, then under, we could fund.
Yes, we do that, we do that on.
But theoretically, I mean, not theoretically, specifically, what you're doing here is you're proving each cost in a total amount, if you look by cost. Right, so you have these cost centers and you're saying that in each one, you're, you're proving the budget of that much that totals up to. You have all years set, you had teacher stipends and your, and your, how much you pay for this, how much you pay for that. Now, granted, you try to get that worked out here and just set everybody on their way with the budget, but you can control it, you manage the budget every hour of every day throughout all the year. But you're, all you're legally doing is improving the cost center units. So.
Right, but it still adds up to the same amount.
Adds up. Adds up to the same amount, but the, the embedded decision tree is, should be part of it in my mind. Because there are things that you have not, you have, don't know yet, whether you have basketball team, whether you have this, but so trying to understand how many variables there are in your garden and then manage them as you move through it is a big piece of it, you know? So what you're, are to there is very much a part of it. Because you get into some things, like what we talked about the well, if we spend thirteen now, we might not have to spend anything after that, or we might, if we spent thirteen now, we only spent ninety-nine hundred. There's, I think that there's more of that that can be done. I've tried to emphasize that in all the meetings, it's like, look, we, we talk about the raises. The raises aren't giving raises, they're putting money there so you can give raises or hire new people or make decisions, but those decisions aren't being made today.
No, I understand that. I just think that there is a lot more work that can go in before we get to this point than there was in this budget.
I'm not disagreeing. What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is in one side or the other, is it, it's a process thing, because you might find things you can say, you know, we, we, we can cut this out because we may or may not need this, and that we could do that here, you know, it could, it's another way to kind of trim.
And I, and I'm not like, I think that this school knows that when we go from seventy-three students to fifty-six students, the likelihood that we have to basketball teams is not very much regardless of the year. You know, so do we, are we going to cut our soccer team? No, because it's co-ed five to eight, we can probably fill the team, even if we have twenty kids in middle school. But like, some of this other stuff can be thought out a little bit more ahead of time, so that we, you know, are we going to pay an athletic director if we only have five thousand dollars, we want to have one team? No, why would we? You know, so it's just hard, and it's like, you know, we don't, yeah, okay. So I don't think there's anything. So, okay, then my next question is one that I've already asked, that last year, we went from two contingencies to one, now we're back up to two. That was a decision with the selectman, the budget committee.
Could you tell us what line you're looking at?
Contingency, thirty-seven. We talked about last month, I'm just second, if you feel want to go with two, then we'll go with two. You know, one contingency is three quarters of a percent. And the other towns that are a lot bigger than us, I don't think they have one or two. So I, I, I have hit a wall without them.
This is if we have to send.
And a new kid moves into town with high school age.
Oh.
And we have, we have it to here.
Yeah, we did have this discussion already. And, but that, that's a process. We have two contingencies, but we have that contingency and then we have the contingency money from if we have three people go to bath, which we've got three juniors in bath right now, so we'll hopefully have that we have three kids in bath next year. Gives us two contingencies for, you know, thirty-one kids that we're planning on sending to Lincoln next year.
I mean, I guess I would rather get to next week and have the budget committee have that contingency.
That's fine. That's what we, that's what we did last.
Let them cut it.
That's what we did last year, so that's, that's fine for the short.
And, and if, and if, and if two students do move to town and want to go to high school, the town's got to pay for them anyway. They're bound to. So it's money that's going to come out of their pocket if it's not in the budget.
But as Peter said, like, we don't have, we can move stuff around, so we can generally find money if we need to. So, yeah.
But if we trim it down to nothing, then we, there, we won't be able to find.
I'm not asking you to trim it down to nothing. I'm asking you to put one contingency and realize that we have another contingency because.
I'm fine with taking it down to one contingency. That's fine, because the selectmen will have to find the money anyway. We don't have to find that money out of our budget. They have to find it out of theirs.
No, we have to find it out of our budget if we get screwed.
If we get two kids, right, and we've, we've had them, we've put in the money for one, and we have two kids move to town who want to go to Lincoln, we don't have that money in our budget.
Yes, we do, because each kid that goes to bath tech, we pay two-thirds of their tuition, so we have one-third of their tuition floating around in our budget for each kid that goes to bath. That's why, that's why I'm, I'm, that's why I'm pushing this. You know, I'm not saying I only want one contingency, I'm saying we have one contingency in the budget, and then we have three juniors right now that are at bath tech. So even if we just have three students at bath tech next year, we have a full contingency in our budget.
What happens if two of those kids that are at bath tech decide they want to go to Lincoln?
Then we don't, then we have one. But right now, we'd have like five or six kids.
But we even have the money to pay for the second kid who wants to go to Lincoln.
Second bath tech kid or second?
Yeah, because the bath tech tuition is cheaper, right?
You can, you know, we went over our.
I'm just saying, like, this, this.
We went over our salary line
Yes.
by forty-three thousand dollars this year. Are we going to make it work? Yes. Do we have to ask the selectman for money, money? No. So generally speaking, there is a little bit of wiggle room to find a little bit of money because we are just making educated guesses on some of these things, and some of them, and we're, we're pretty conservative, which is the right way to go. So if we have a conservative estimate on propane or, you know, we put, you know, and we're off by two thousand, then we have, we we generally, and we're going to find forty-three thousand without having to have any special meetings this year, likely. Right, so you know, that, that's why I feel comfortable with bath and with one contingency. We can, we can keep it, and then we can discuss it with the selectman. I'm just, I, I'm, I'm nervous about the increase, and so that's why I'm bringing it up again. So it's, it's the same discussion we had last time. It is.
But we've talked a lot, and we've learned that too, because we're just going to reduce this.
Yep. And I'm just, I, I don't want to present a seven point five percent increase in the budget, so that's why I'm bringing it up again. Because that's a lot. So that's not a fixed cost that we are required to, so it sounds like we just deep it in and we let the budget committee talk about it next week.
Sure.
All right, so. Um, I've written an email to Kelly about some of the special ed lines. I was a little bit worried that E S Y and compensatory summer was actually a little bit low, because I worry about having. Yeah, but she said it was fine. Special ed reserve is in there. Um, I asked about the contracted social worker because last year was the first year that we had fifty thousand dollars in the contracted social worker line, and that was a recommendation from Kelly. Um, this morning, I emailed her and said, because getting the the Chuck zero X, it says social work is another area that sometimes students need services, and though at the moment, there are zero heating up. So that is her stance on that. So I said, okay, given that we're asking for a hundred thousand dollar special ed reserve, can we bring that down to five thousand dollars? Because if we didn't need another ten thousand dollars for contracted social work, that could come out of the reserve, because the reserve will be for the purpose of special ed.
She, she seemed with me with that, right?
And she said, I think you could probably take social work down to five thousand.
Yeah, that's what, as you were talking, so.
Okay. So we all have favor of insert computer to take that down to five thousand.
Right, and like we got that reserve, you guys have a contingency plan to put that in.
Sure.
And you know, if the reserve gets voted down next week.
Where's that contingent, the hundred thousand dollar contingency system at the top?
It's at a one fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
And that is.
Social workers next one.
And fifty-five is basically replacing fifty and fifty-one, correct?
No. No, the other lines in this cost center are replacing fifty and fifty-one. The reserve is in case something changes. It's something we're not prepared for. A student with needs moves in now.
And that could get eaten up in one year.
Yes, our student has to move out of district or place.
Right. So we've done our, our best to estimate this cost center as it should run without that reserve.
But.
Okay. In that case, I mean, I, then using your logic, Sarah, we could let the selectmen and the budget committee, whoever cut that reserve in half if we wanted to, right? Because it's all imaginary anyway. And if we don't spend the money, then we have it in the bank, and we can ask for the same amount next year, and let's keep it in the bank, right? And if we uh, need more than we have, we just got to find.
If we need, I mean, and this, this is trying to avoid the, and we've talked about, this is trying to avoid the situation where we have to have a special town meeting to put the funds for special ed.
So I guess which is, which is less arduous or, or less, right, raising the, raising the tax dollars, that fifty grand?
It's not, it's not actually raising the tax dollars that fifty grand, because it would come from the Stratton Fund. So the money theoretically could sit in the Stratton Fund, but if we needed up to a hundred thousand dollars, we would take it out of the Stratton Fund. But it would actually, it's not, it doesn't change the tax increase to the taxpayer.
Are there, are there certain lines that do that and certain lines that don't?
So that's why when I.
Maybe we could differentiate those, that would be helpful.
Well, so when you look at, that's why I started out saying, like, if you look at this budget, it's up fifteen point six, fifteen point six percent. But that's not in order for it to go in my head, like, I mean, the, the PFAS a hundred thousand, up until this year, when we learned that statute required us to put building names in our school budget, we didn't. So like, when we did this roof last year, it was a separate ward article that was separate from the town budget, and we just appropriated it up to a hundred and fifteen thousand or whatever for the roof. So it was separate from the school budget. It didn't, it didn't show, the percent increase didn't show the building project, and it didn't show reserve. So that's why, and.
And the town took it out of the Stratton Fund?
Yes.
So it was no skin off anybody's back.
So that's why, when I look at this, I take out the two hundred thousand, hundred fifty fast, hundred for the reserve, which hopefully we don't have to spend. And then I look at what's left over, because that, to me, is the taxpayer impact, right?
Pretty much.
Yeah.
And you're not, you're not wrong as a couple of nuances to it. But basically, you know, the two hundred thousand dollars that we have in, that we have increased our expenses for PFAS facilities line and the hundred thou, it was a hundred thousand, and a hundred thousand for the special ed reserve. Those aren't, you're not asking taxpayers to pay them, you're asking Stratton Fund to pay them.
Right.
So in the past, you didn't even look at that, this is like the budget, you didn't, because, but it is, the statute says you have to put it through the budget. So we're trying to do that, but if we just table that when we talk to the budget committee until after we show, show them the budget, then they'd be looking right now, actually take that social worker at something like a seven hundred four percent increase from last year. If you plug all that in, and you're now apples to oranges, and you know, and then, as you've added in two hundred thousand dollars in new expenses that you never had shown before, because you were just grabbing from Stratton Fund and make it disappear. And then you'd be up like fifteen percent. But your taxpayer impact's going to be higher this year, no matter what you do, because you've lost sixty-five thousand dollars in fund balance forward that you had saved up before. And you also lost that seventy-five thousand dollar donation, so you're starting with a hundred and forty thousand dollars less revenue than you started before.
Yeah.
So the combination of that seven and a half percent increase in expenses and a hundred and forty thousand dollars less revenue is really the thing that's driving you to over fourteen percent taxpayer impact.
Sorry, what's the sixty?
Forget about the Stratton Fund, forget about those reserves. You're going to have, right now, you're looking at about a seven quarter percent increase in your expenses, but without those other revenues, you're going to have a bigger taxpayer. And I'll point out, as you look at all these decisions you're making, and I, I applaud you for digging into the weeds and looking for every nickel and watching the different school committees do that, and I find it, you know, honestly, kind of heartening that people are taking that kind of interest in what's going on in schools. At the same time, I look at what's been going on as a trend here, as, as that happens more and more, we're getting smaller and smaller fund balances forward. Things get tighter and tighter. GSP ended at five thousand bucks in the hole last year. Okay? Because something happened they didn't expect. Nova Bar's goes back to the school to, 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 I'm preparing numbers for Nova Bar to go back and ask for fifty thousand more to finish this year. I don't want to see you guys get in that position. This is getting, people are getting too tight.
And meanwhile, you were saying that Jefferson is doing the opposite, right?
Jefferson has a million bucks in the bank and reserves. Seven hundred thousand in facilities reserve, hundred and fifty thousand in bus reserve, that, you know, and.
And we have no capital improvement.
And, what's that?
You don't have any capital.
No, you're set up, you're much different, much different demographic, much different local economy, much different set of resources. They don't, they don't have any like a Stratton Fund, if they build reserves, you know? Because I'm Stratton Fund, so you've been able to get by without building reserves. But at a certain point, I just worry about driving the general fund too close to the boat. We, whether you have a Stratton Fund or not.
Right.
You know, and that's what I'm seeing. It's not just some Bristol speaking, there isn't a aside from Jefferson, the rest of, everybody's getting, everybody's getting tighter and tighter because the, because they're combating that inflation by trying to tighten every script, you know? And, and, but it, we're getting this opposite, what this impact though is happening, it's going to catch up, where there's no fund balance forward, and then you have a bigger tax impact because you used to have money rolling forward. You know, Nova Bar has gone the last four or five years from having a four hundred thousand dollar fund balance forward to being forty thousand dollars short. Right? And it's not the first time that cycle has occurred. And that cycle happens, and people say, we got to start building some coffers here, because, you know, one of the school community members from Nova Bar last night said, we got to start thinking about this, it's not just a one-year budget. You know, this is a multi-year program we're building, because we'll be back here next year. And that, that kind of sort of like longer-term thinking is really where I'm at, because I'm looking at your budget for, I, I'm never one year. I'm still working, I'm just getting your FY twenty-three audits done, managing FY twenty-four, putting in FY twenty-five numbers now and realizing what the impact's going to be on FY twenty-six. So I'm, every day, I'm dealing with at least four years and thinking about these longer cycles.
Right.
And we got it, as much as, you know, Sarah is absolutely right, so wherever I own what they're repaying, I applaud it. At the same time, you got to start thinking of these longer-term cycles and making sure you don't drive too close to the boat. And sometimes I feel that you will get pressure back from the select board and town budget committee to get it down as low as you can, because they're watching that, that year's tax impact, but this becomes part of the story to share with them To get it down as low as you can because they're watching that that year's tax impact, but this becomes part of the story to share with them. To get them to understand where you're at. So I feel like it's a. I feel like I'm seeing it everywhere. And it becomes sort of the story of what's actually happening in public education in response to our economy, right? But I share that with you so you can see that you're not alone. And that there's discussions to be had. You haven't a lot of the right ones. But the piece that I'm asking you to pay attention to is that it's not a one-year plan. You you're working on one year right now. But you're responsible for keeping this thing alive for a long time.
When we run it too tight. I mean, our last principle, we ran it too tight and we got into trouble and we didn't, we didn't go over, but we got. He was very bottom line conscious, which was a strength, but it was also a weakness. And so. We've done that in recent history and we've realized that we can't do that. So I think what Peter's saying is is right, and we've seen it in this town. So we need to, you know, there there is a fine line somewhere there and we don't want it to be too much, but we also haven't, you know. Gone crazy and had, you know, tens of thousand dollars of speech. That were over like some of the other schools have, and so. So I think that, you know, by providing a third middle school teacher for, you know, a middle school of maybe. Twenty-five or thirty kids next year, we're, we aren't. Doing anything to impact the opportunities that these kids get here and the opportunities that the teachers are able to give them. Or that the teachers are able to take advantage of, like the tuition line and. The professional development and all that stuff. So I I don't think that we're. Even the things that I'm talking about, and part of the reason I'm looking at all these and asking very specific questions is because we did have a forty-three thousand dollar. Overage in the salary line last year and some of that could have been predicted. So I'm off base on a lot of my questions. But I just, I think the mistakes that. Mean that we're over from last year, I just don't wanna, I wanna make sure that that we have. Really thought about how many kids we have going to Lincoln next year and make sure that we have all the teachers are in the salary line and things like that, so. I think it's just a. I think we need to. Pay attention to what's here and also not run it too close to the line like Peter said and like we've done in the past. Um, I think there's a lot of agreement there. And so when you ask about compass and pathways, and this, there's a question for you guys, I guess. Compass and pathways, the share that we pay to send a student, that we have paid to send a student there, that includes transportation, right?
Yes, because, yes.
So we have this compass and pathways line. That is, you know, a hundred and ninety thousand. But then when you go and look at transportation. It's another fifty-five thousand. So even though the special ed line is going down three percent, that doesn't take into account fifty-five thousand for special ed transportation. That actually was already built into that compass and pathways. So we're not like saving money or even breaking even. I don't think, right, when you add that fifty-five thousand in.
Because we still require that for.
So it's, I mean, I, and I think that's, part of that's to say is that we have included. A lot of money in special ed because it's kind of a new situation to us. So I'm hoping that all of this. Will take care of this. Next year, and then once if we, if things continue to go as they are now, we'll have a better sense of. Exactly what we need for special ed the following year, but because it's not nailed down. I think we've. We've done a good job making sure that. Worst case scenarios can be handled by this. Does that make sense? There are just a lot of unknowns for next year. Um, and after that, we might be able to. Have a little bit more confidence over exactly what we're gonna need to spend to take care of the kids that were passed with taken care of as far as.
Bottom line, we dropped.
About that. The fifty-five thousand in transportation. That was included, so.
I get it.
So it's more like we're. You know.
Yeah, but because we don't know, we don't know, because we don't have the, the actual, the bad experience.
Yeah, well, and we are, and that, but the fifty-five thousand dollars we're using right now, so it's just, I'm just pointing out that we're not. As, I thought that we might be able to break even with the compass and pathways not paying for it and then everything we need, but. We're not, we're actually over. And.
I mean, the tough part too, like it's gonna be. How we share.
Can I ask what um, the line below sixty-four is, which is not line sixty-five?
Yeah. Talked about this last time, right?
Yeah. Where is it? Sixty-four shared psych intern. So. We have one school psychologist that serves. All our seven hundred students. In K three. And that's a pretty heavy caseload for an individual. Um, we've never proposed adding another school psychologist because they come at a high price. And we've managed to get by with just one. However, this program that's offered from the, you know, through the D O E to hire a recently. Certified or where if you have, you have their degree. School psychologists who would be an intern. And we pay them home, a salary of something like twenty thousand dollars a year. Uh, and then we provide them with health insurance. And so we get the services of a person full-time for the school year. Add a tiny fraction of the cost. So it adds tremendous value to how much we're able to provide, and there's a lot of demand on that position right now. And so Kelly um, has asked all the schools to pay a share of that intern. And while it's available. And um, and so she's added that to this year's budget. That request.
And what I didn't understand about that position, um, because I asked a couple more questions about it was that um. When a child has an I U P, they need to be evaluated. At a pretty high level, and then after that, they have to be evaluated every three years. So it's, I was thinking it was like a more. High needs position, and then she explained, or Lindsay explained to me that it's actually. You know, every I U P kid needs to use this service. And they will continue to need to use the service every three years. But that, that made, that helped me understand. Kind of the base level of of it, because when you say psych services, I think of high needs, and and this really isn't that. Um, it's interesting to me that it's not part of the like central office. You know, shared services, it's kind of something aside from that that is just kind of agreeing to, to share something. You know, when we have these positions, chances are we're paying more than we're gonna use it, but um, maybe not.
So this is um, this person is shared between us and Bristol? Or all the schools?
We're asking all the schools to pay for.
And it's just one? Person?
Yes.
So they're getting more than.
Exactly.
This has been broken up by equal share per school.
Yep.
Right.
Not a. Because, like, if you look at your uh, shared psych. K three eight above, you're getting, that's your share of a one full-time psychologist, you're paying five percent of that person's costs. And it's only costing you seven thousand four hundred and.
Right.
You know, here we just divided that person by equal amount for all five schools.
Right.
And so you're getting a full health insurance, which is twenty-eight thousand dollars in budget for that. And then the other expenses of twenty-something thousand, it ends up fifty thousand dollars for like the price.
And psych, psych supplies is just new, that's not.
The couch.
Yeah, that's not. That would be without the intern too, right?
That's, well, Kelly knows that she had never. So she was borrowing from her spent supplies to pay for the psychologist's supplies, because we had never properly budgeted the psychologist to have any supplies. And that's just as an oversight of, you know, sort of the years of.
And I do have the information directly from Kelly about that. She said, uh, the student is a school psychology graduate student. From University of Southern Maine, and she'll be with us for the spring semester.
So this.
Next year. Not now.
Just one semester? The, the health insurance costs looks high for really to pay for one semester. It may end up coming in less. That's the number. I was given.
Yeah, and that would, I'm just curious, but it doesn't affect this, but, because that's, I mean. I feel like it's something we kind of have to play nice on, but that's a lot for one semester. So that's.
So it's like a twenty-five thousand dollar salary for one semester as an intern? Fresh out of school?
Kelly gave us um.
But I think.
Whether, is it in the South Bristol School Special Education?
Well, so this is another interesting thing that Kelly says, given the very small number of identified students at South Bristol School, there's no need to worry a lot about. Ability to serve as unexpected students who may move into the area, which is, seems a little bit contradictory. All right, identify students, students with I U Ps.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just looking at the terminology.
And I think that one of the things that we've always talked about when we talk about special ed at South Bristol School is there are identified students. And then there are students that fall. Just short of being identified. And one of the things that we look at is that. Looking at just these identified students' numbers as Amanda's caseload is a little bit misleading. Because of the amount of work she puts into the students that are maybe struggling but don't need an I U P. So there's kind of two levels. Right, so there's kind of two levels of students and that second level is not necessarily represented there. Um, but the work that she does with them to help them succeed is. Necessary as well. All right, so regardless of the price or the length of service. Or will they have the shared psych intern? Yep, okay, and psych supplies seems. Solid too, so we'll pay. Um, ten thousand dollars out of that.
Social worker.
For the social worker. And, yeah. Okay, so all their instruction. Placehold at the Barnes. Um, guidance, health or benefits, nurse. You know, that discussion terms, the library. Um, health supplies, like um, back development.
What's line seventy-nine? And why did that jump up?
So that is the. Is the um. The assessment for curriculum administration is a. For the assessment for the central offices, student staff support. Student staff support includes. But I don't know, some so large percentage, fifty percent of Tara. And her health insurance, everything goes with that. It also includes the new position of I T director. That's one of the big reasons it jumped up so.
Okay.
Line ninety-seven. The path will take his initials out of there.
Yeah.
Any other questions about this?
Yeah, um. Wait, aren't we paying for the nurse somewhere else?
Paying for the nurse or nurse line, you're also paying for contracted nurse services, which is that portion of the nurse, which is her. One day a week or whatever that is, where she serves a ten nurse to all the schools. So there's two lines in here.
Okay, but the, so this is Crystal?
Yeah.
We don't identify.
Nine seventy-seven, uh, nursing shared health services is that portion that covers being the ed nurse.
Okay.
And then the nurse salary down further is that that physician's. Um, salary, but where is it?
Seventy-three, it's up above.
Up above, thank you. And again, up seventeen, seventeen percent for which one?
Sometimes I get, no, student staff support is up forty thousand, taking sixteen point six six percent.
There's a significant bump in there for the technology ed tech.
No, that's just, I mean, that's.
And we're adding five thousand in line one oh three because we decided to. Uh, include another, or we needed another. Machine. Line one oh three.
That is, um, John, when John submitted his budget. He tried to keep the bottom line for the whole, for everything he was spending about the same and move some things around. So it's kind of wash, his budget. His I T budget wasn't.
You see, there's a lot less software, more hardware.
Yeah, thank you.
So I think having the actual explanation would be useful.
Um, I've got his budget online, I'll share with you in a moment.
But I think that, that, the, um. I think it was admirable to keep it all the same. There's no. There's no set budget for that, so. It's nice that there's no increase, but it's not that we allow for X number of dollars for computer. Stuff, so we keep it below that.
Well, I think I remember Chuck saying that that, um, John was trying to cycle things out on a, on a rotating basis, right?
Questioning the purchases. Because I think that he's done a remarkable job with this, but I think that having the, particularly for that line that you were talking about, the one oh three, like. Okay, so what is, we just need to say, this is why, like, we have to cycle.
Need to be able to answer. The, the budget committee's questions, as they're gonna ask questions.
Okay. Uh, anything else on that student staff support? Doesn't seem like there's a lot that can even really be such. Uh, system administration, we need that increase.
We could cut that in half by taking our school board legal fees down to five thousand again.
Okay. School board legal fees, no, um. We could. I think one of the reasons that. We may wanna think about exactly where, what that number is, we are gonna be negotiating this year. And I think it's kind of like the. We don't know, we don't know.
We're still in some conversations that may lead to, maybe you invited Bill Starkmeyer to drive up here from Portland at five hundred fifty bucks or whatever.
Um, so I think, I mean, I, yeah, I. What do you think?
Well, we approve that of, that there's money for that in this year's budget.
Is there?
Money we're spending now, right? I mean. This is, this is for next year, so hopefully we'll have.
If you ask Bill Starkmeyer to drive up here, you have to pay him his hourly rate. And then hey, drives up two hours, spends a couple hours with you and drives back, and six hours of one of the most expensive lawyers you've made. You don't have a budget for that, because that isn't what you asked the A O S to, you asked the A O S for Lindsay and I to work with them, which we've done, that's being paid by you at all times. You'd be on the hook for that one.
Right. But that's coming out of the current year's.
Yeah, but we call the budget, it doesn't need budget.
What you have. What you have.
Five thousand.
Two hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
And he hasn't come yet?
He hasn't come.
That's two hours. I guess lawyers probably drive slow, don't they?
But anything like, I'm just saying, if you're engaged, you have negotiations, and you're engaging in a conversation with Bristol, that may lead to some sort of. Hyper local agreement or something.
We start, so we're negotiating support staff soon. Are we on the third year of the teacher company?
I have to double check.
Either the second or the third, I'm not, I can't remember either.
Do you know, Chuck?
I don't think we are. Seems pretty fresh.
You.
It feels like you guys did that the year right before we came off.
It was my first year. So, yeah, next year would be year three.
Yep, so that means we could be. Since if this is year two, next year is year three, so by next year we have to negotiate.
Next year is a negotiating year.
So then I would say that this number is probably enough.
Yes, not enough.
Well, no, we're not, we don't expect, and we have, we've, we've been. I wouldn't take it down, I wouldn't take it down, but it is, it's a little bit of a contingency, because usually you can get it on. They have a negotiator that comes, so we sometimes do.
Attorney's fees on budgets are always a contention.
Then you look at G S B and some of the things that.
Yeah.
Could be.
Right.
Coming up, it's. Okay, any questions on that?
When you put it that way, Sarah.
It sounds better than the eleven thousand dollar increase, so that doesn't sound as. So it's not a huge, it's not a huge one.
It's not a huge.
Yeah, center, yeah. The administration. Um, I haven't noticed this administration assistant overtime. Is that different than like extending her contact a couple of days? I mean. I just, I, I haven't been paying attention to that line before.
So I had that line for a couple of reasons, um. One, because you have thirty percent overtime that adds up to this much each year. And two, because we didn't, we didn't have a school.
You do, okay.
And we didn't hear, and you were questioning, um, why was she getting a certain level raised? And then when I went and I looked into it, it wasn't, we were just finally budgeting the overtime she's already been.
Yeah, I know, that makes sense.
You know, so I was like, let's break it out so that when we have this conversation, I remember what the answer is.
Yep, that's perfect, I, I've never seen an overtime budget in sports, but like, and I haven't noticed it in the last.
So I did get your answer on negotiations, this year is support staff, next year is teachers.
Thank you. Why, thanks for the administration?
Anything we can do here?
Yeah, this is the last year.
Last year, these wonderful prices.
Yeah, what's basically, it's go up next year, not down.
These prices have not gone up since September. And they, and so next year they will be making up for lost profits.
And we will have, in my experience, maybe it'll be different now, but we've had one person that on it. And so.
So. That's again, you know, every month, fifteen bucks a year.
And that's, I mean, to some degree, we've been doing that, like, when we talk about the roof, we talk about like, I mean. But there are some things that we don't know, but that, the bus has definitely been on the. Oh, now here, come next year. Yep.
But FY twenty-six, we're gonna punch it way up.
But we should, so the negotiations will happen before we have to budget for FY twenty-six, though, right, Peter? But you'll know the numbers when we're.
That's, that's between you and the teachers association. Pretty soon, like, we can do that earlier than a lot of things. I heard, I have a running conversation with Angela, her student, about that's coming up.
Oh.
Let's get it done, plenty of time shows that we can see coming in our budgets.
Sarah, um. I know we have summer, um, school funded, not in this budget, right?
Uh, no. No, I wrote a grant last year.
Right.
The title reallocation grant, and I will put in for that same grant, but that's a competitive grant. So it just depends on how many schools are applying and how we fit within what they're looking for.
Other schools budgeting for summer school?
No. They are in special ed, cause you have to.
Yeah.
Some schools have asked for some like, for some, for summer school, others are hoping that they get the grant, willing to not do it if they don't. And so there's a difference of opinion in each one I'm talking to. And some have had better luck with attendance than others. And so they say, well, you know, we had heart attacks, I, I, I'm just listening, so, because I actually should be talking, asking Tara, but I can tell you.
That's where we started.
On, on the budget, though, I've been participating in conversations, we're making all different choices. Should they be? I think we would recommend that they budget for it, because zero is.
Um, and the reason I was asking it was because even if we do get the grant. We transport our kids here, which I think is different from what it sounds.
Uh, wait, each town does their own thing.
Right, so, but this budget does not reflect summer school or transportation for summer school.
That's right, last year, transportation was a part of that grant.
Oh, it was, okay.
And I will put it, I'll put in for it. All the supplies, transportation, the salaries, the benefits, um, the costs for trips were a part of that. Yeah.
Are we okay not having summer school?
You have a bigger, or what it was last year?
About how many kids? I think you had twelve that signed up, ten who actually attended at one time or another, and your average was about eight. You had some really high days and then some really low days.
What?
What was the cost, you remember?
What was the grant? I think yours was about twenty-six thousand, but I can look it up if you'd like.
Without trans, with transportation?
With transportation.
Well, what cost center are we looking at if we're putting this summer central back in here?
Actually, no, our, with, you know, principal had requested eight thousand. Hoping that they would, that would supplement with a potential grant to be able to do more with some kids. Got cut down to four thousand, because he said there's gonna be some kids that need some help. And, and so that's what we cut down to, just enough for that, not really a program, certainly nothing like what Tara produced last year, you know? But, and, um. Conversation in another school committee that was just getting started, that I was participating in today, was like, we don't need to put anything in there, either we can grant or we don't. And I, you know. I'm watching the whole thing, realizing that, you know, this is what we talked about, the ESSR cliff, when the ESSR money runs out, it would have an impact. Seems like it's had a big impact on what we have a budget for, plan for summer school to provide for our own end. I have no idea, because we've just got the ball rolling with the state trade, offering these other outdoor summer things that. See whether or not they sustain them, at what level, for how many participants, I don't know.
Yeah, that's a different grant, so the, and we have already put in for, I already applied for that one for South Crystal. And that one is for students in sixth through eighth grade currently, so it would be the rising six. Yep, and that is, um, I think yours is for ten students would be. And they would be able to apply, and then it's a pretty comprehensive program that's been designed by Coastal Rivers.
That's almost.
But again, that's a competitive grant. Right, yeah.
Yeah.
They'd have some options.
We have budgeted for some of them. Um, so it has been something that the town has supported, um. In the past, um, and I think that. Being able to offer, yeah, please.
I'm just making a connection with you, something you said earlier, and, um, and some of the things I've been observing with. But Burns Fund, they, please put the Burns Fund budget is, which hasn't actually, all we're doing is carrying forward right now, last year's budget to next year. Has this after-school program line, it wasn't margin call, getting used to the degree of budget now. Is it possible that the Burns Fund could be used for summer school?
I can't speak to how Burns has been. Spent down this year, so I'm not sure we've seen it recently, so I don't know. If you look at our encumbrances for the after-school program. Um, what is, what money we might have left over? I know we've had days where we can't staff it, so there's a chance that maybe we have some left over, and we might not be. Um, we might not be expending the whole salary line, um. And. Yeah, I don't know.
The other piece of the conversation I was given, as you said, you might not have two baseball, a baseball team, or whatever, do basketball team.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering if that's a way to look at the summer school, cause I, I hesitate to suggest to throw twenty-six thousand dollars into the budget now for summer school, you know?
But, well, so my, my new favorite phrase now, or word, if you serve. And. As you know, I can't, I personally don't feel comfortable going to bat for some of these, and I, and, and. And I will as a board, cause we've agreed on it, so I'm not saying I'm gonna go over anything, but. Putting money in for summer school is, I think. Incredibly important to our school and our kids. And, um. So.
And I, and I will just say, I, I can do a good program for less money, I just ask for. You know, if we get our pick, then I'd like to be able to do more for the kids.
Right, and I think so, like, I mean, if we had a program. Yeah, you know, it, maybe it doesn't include, you know, trips, or maybe includes one trip at the end of each session or month or whatever, but, um. But, uh. I would think that just. Not only the. Decrease in summer learning loss and all of those things, and just having our kids have some place to go in the summer is incredibly important.
I would agree.
I have a hard time not putting that in the budget, and I think the conversation about how we can put that in the budget. Maybe is best for next week.
So, these after-school program director salary budget, the Burns Fund for this year was set twenty-one thousand. And the first half of the year is forty-three hundred. If you operate essentially the same, use another, say even five thousand, you're gonna have, you know, eleven thousand left over in that money.
But I think it's a conversation that really, that we go.
Yeah, I think it'd be a great conversation.
And it might be that, I mean, if we're thinking about transportation, Burns funds are corporate direct to transportation. So that makes sense to me just right off the bat. And then potentially summer school supplies would make sense to me right off the bat, and maybe it's that we have to. Budget for, um. Salary. But that's just my first pass, I don't, I don't know, but those, those things seem to follow along the lines of. What we've used it for, and even field trips, honestly, like, field trips are what Burns pays for, so.
Okay.
You know.
We're thinking of structuring it differently this year, so the cost might be different, um. We're thinking the first two hour, at least for the youngers, the first two hours would be with Coastal Rivers, so that they would come to their own school. And then explore the nature right in this area. In the same way they did at the different locations, which will save on the transportation as well. And then they would go into the tutoring and then either go home or go to the wife.
And Coastal Rivers staff would be here, is that what you're saying?
Yep, they're gonna, they would send staff out to the schools and where, wherever their location is, um.
It is that.
And then when they were done here, pending, we get the, I see, I've already banked on it. The grant for the middle school students, then they would go to those locations next, so it would be the same staff, and that way. They can hire one group and they would be able to offer K eight.
And if, um. So is the cost of this Coastal Rivers staff? It's under the grant, so like, yeah.
Just the hours for the middle schools under the main outdoor learning one, and then the, um, hours for the K through. I guess it would be five, will be under the, um, reallocation grant.
So would it be possible for you to?
Tell you how much each of the costs is, yes, easy.
If we were to have, like, we're gonna have some handouts to go with the budget, one is like a nine through twelve. Clock center, it shows that like nine through twelve education is like, I think, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for our high school kids. So we break up a few things, we try and get some visuals to help people understand, um. Is it possible for you to just put a couple of? Maybe numbers and, I don't know. It would be nice to hand the budget committee like, a little like. Here's what we're thinking about with summer school, here's the potential cost, how do we want to handle it? Because I don't think we need to. I don't necessarily think we need to put it in here, but I think we need to say, look, this is important, and here's why it's important, and how should we deal with this?
I think we should put it in.
I can easily give you the, like, I just put in the budget for the main outdoor learning one.
Okay, and that's the.
So that I have a whole budget worked for, yep, and then, um, I have last year's budget for the reallocation grant, and I can just change the numbers on that one.
And were there two staff members here?
Yes, I only put in for one, because the numbers were so small for eight children, one person. But, um, they were used to having two people, so the other person was paid for with ESSR funds.
So.
I know, I, I get that, but, um, the state's not gonna pay for that.
No, I know, but.
Like, I wouldn't get, that's not competitive to say I want that many for such a small group of kids.
If we're talking about doing our own, though.
Oh, yeah, yep. I can give you the cost for one, and then you can double it.
And do they have, what was the, that's, I'm gonna get too much into it, okay. Um, so where does, where does that fall in the budget? Where do we put that?
Yeah, Peter, where does that go?
So at summer school?
Yeah.
Regular structure.
Yeah, okay. Loving that.
Okay, so that's gonna be important to this one, though.
Yeah, and remember the costs that I'm putting in for are well above what we would.
Potentially need.
Yeah, right, it's. It's the Cadillac.
Oh, alright, so, so, this is, nobody, nobody's been around here for the Cadillac thing, do not mention that. There's a whole Cadillac thing with Mr. White, it was a disaster.
Oh, dear.
Do we want to put in the Cadillac?
That's what I asked for in the grant.
Well, that's.
I'm, what I'm proposing is that if you're gonna put in a budget amount, that you would reduce that amount and ask for like a.
I agree.
Thirty.
Uh, this would do the tutoring.
Yeah.
Style program. And hope that you don't need to use that, and then you would potentially. Have it roll over from year to year, and then you wouldn't have to do it twice, right?
Um, when's realistic to have that? From you?
When do you need it?
Um, supposed to get all this departmental members on Thursday, Friday, Thursday.
Like, this Thursday?
We're meeting, so we have our budget, joint budget meeting on Tuesday, so we need to get the materials to them. I'm actually, I mean.
I can really quickly give you what I'm.
Yeah.
Putting in for the grants.
Yeah.
And then prioritize it for you, it won't be pretty, but yeah, I can get that due tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. I'm sorry to make.
I could do it now, but I, you're being recorded on my computer.
Request, I. I think I misunderstood.
That's not a problem, that's work that's already been completed, that I'm just, I'm just copying for you, that's quick. That's not a problem, that's work that's already been completed, that I'm just, I'm just copying for you, that's quick.
Thank you.
Yep.
And you saw that does like the transportation, right? The grant.
Yep, both of them.
Okay, I'm here, so do mine, go.
For the other day, I was kind of.
Oh, actually, that's not.
I was kind of worried uh of pitching um some of the different courses of action. With regard to the PFAS treatment, if it comes back, we do need. Think of a more robust system to clean the water. When Adam showed me that, um. My thought came to me, well, why would there be such a difference between what? Uh, political optimism pitched.
Optimum.
Optimum. If that spurred the, what, what we might be able to get from a city sort of situation. Um, and when you only thought that everything, maybe when you put in that kind of. Treatment equipment, you do need a cement slab. That's expensive. I don't think it just comes with cement slab.
It does not come with a cement slab.
So I was kind of worried when pitched this, it kind of tickled on the back of my head, and kind of in my house. That equipment's. The two to flow right into cement significantly. So I think that's another question to maybe circle back to, though.
The other thing about our. Big water system, like the boats I developed runs on, it's. It's hopeful to have it in that floor of the drain, because sometimes the water leaks.
Yeah.
But uh.
So I'm still kind of non-plus, I, I don't know that this really needs to be fine, and then. There was something else, and I don't know if, uh, when I was reading some of the MRSA. They're gonna just do a building, but to me, this is a temporary structure. Kind of like solving. And I think that's probably past its life cycle. So, what are we gonna address that? I don't trust this as a solution, because it doesn't have a separate lab. But I'm not an engineer, so we need somebody who is that, that kind of guy, the facility guy, to give us a real answer to what that.
Alright.
So I worry about that number, thanks, Lo.
So.
Oh, it's that big strapping. Yeah. And it's, it's great, if something like this were worth. But I don't know if that is.
Yeah, and I think that that's a really good point.
So when I see that, I know we're trying not to play money, I get that.
No, that's not. I don't get that impression from. The PFAS.
No, no, I don't mean that you're not willing to, I, I think they're looking for less expensive options.
But we need to talk about the level thing.
That, that's sort of the point that I brought up, I think we need to verify, can, can you use the? What looks like a temporary dome to house that kind of equipment in? Especially it doesn't have a. So it's lab, it's. I'm not a plumber, I'm not an engineer.
And so this one part of a hundred thousand.
Yep.
Isn't really. Our number, I mean, is that fair to say?
No.
You know, it's not, so, so we can work with this number in the next week to try and figure out the answers to this. And this number also now has, it had. Seventeen thousand dollars built in. No, for um. It, it, it was more than the exact dollar amount that we've estimated. So, and then we've taken another thirteen off of it. So we've built more contingency, and if we stick with this number. Um, and then if we. Um, you know, talk to the selectmen and ask them the cement slab question tomorrow. Um, then we can find the answer, then we might end up. Texting Peter tomorrow, or next Monday, and say, hey, can you change that number to a hundred and fifty thousand?
Well, and the other thing is, although the code allows us to, like, temporary building like that. To put a trash dish water treatment.
And that's, and that's what, so that's what we have to find out, and that's our work for the next, that's what the talent, so I don't know if anyone.
Have you put the new pipes, how to keep those pipes warm, it's just a shed.
So it's insulated, we have a ten by fourteen. So, so it's a building that has a ten by fourteen insulated.
Uh, heater.
With one door, and then the fourteen by. Fourteen section is uninsulated with a double door, so you, the storage is not connected to the water system.
But I mean, this is, this is, this is a significant. Thing, and need somebody who has the financials and training and education to design this. Ask the question, I mean, look at it, one, you know, we need to look at the, at the rules and regs for. School buildings, can you do such a thing? And two, ask somebody who has, maybe is a professional engineer, and say, yeah, this is. Good to go, or your solution, they come up with, it's not. Which. You know, that's why I'm trying to get us. Yeah, no, it looks, it looks like we're gonna, we're getting some traction, so that's okay.
Alright, anyone wanna go to the select meeting?
I spent all day there. Or the teller office, so.
Can we schedule our meeting with them for the thirtieth?
Yeah, but.
Yes, but.
But you, if you need numbers before the thirtieth. And the answer is if it's, can you to get a cement slab, if we've accounted for a heater, which we definitely need, since that's no brainer. Um, so you need, you need to ask questions before you bring them to have a number for Tuesday. Right? Um, so to answer your question about the contingency, we were never allowed contingencies, and then like. Couple of years before third day, and we're almost. Anyway, they said ten thousand dollars, you can have ten thousand dollars, and the interesting thing to me is, they said you can have ten thousand dollars every year. Then if you have a kid moving to town, you can spend ten thousand dollars if you don't spend this on their tuition. You know, so, um, so that's what, that number has not increased, but it's been maybe five or six years, like it hasn't been there forever. Um, so we'll do some more work into the. Number for the E fast system.
That's in, that's line one fifty-one.
Yeah.
And then the extra in line, one fifty-six.
Yeah, that's my question, I don't know what that is.
You've added thirty thousand dollars for contracted services. The other little bit, the other three thousand or so you've added, because we looked at the trial balances. And determine that's, you know, you really aren't hitting that mark.
Not every year, okay.
And that thirty K is just a, is a essentially like a not to exceed number, it's just there, it all has to get spent, it depends on how deep you go.
Well, and so the interesting thing about, go ahead, there you can say.
Well, you haven't met with uh Superior Restoration Services, and you've had a number from them, yeah. There's also a couple of lines further down, we're gonna get to in a minute. The uh school equipment, nine thousand, and the capital enhancements improvements of sixteen thousand. These are lines that I think we're gonna discover, we don't really know what we do with that, what we're gonna do with that money. And potentially they become out to be lower, or, you know, reduced in such a way, you keep some money in those lines. But also don't know how far you're gonna get into the thirty, and begin to have, like we were talking about earlier, some embedded decisions, you know? I did reduce the electricity of Christians' note uh from twenty thousand to fifteen thousand. We ran close to sixteen thousand at the end of F line twenty-three. And when we looked at that, we were like, we just, we're gonna need to be prepared for. The worst case scenario, but in fact, as you pointed out, it should go down, rates are going down. When I was thinking worst case scenario, one thing to keep in mind is that that, we worked out a third-party uh um. Power supply agreement with Shell, we're not, we're getting our power from Shell, not C N P, all the C N P lines, but Shell is the provider.
Yeah.
And they were providing, we got a great deal because they were buying market share. Cause they were just entering that to market, and um. I don't know, even though the rates have gone down, I don't know, Shell's gonna be as competitive as it was, so I was just kind of hedging my bets. When I put twenty. But at this stage, it was tightening things up, and in response, they're looking at it closer because you're right, you know, we only had sixteen. And now we should be saving. I'm, I can, I'll take five out of there. So we take five out of there. We're not sure with the nine sixteen, if they're fully needed, and we don't.
The nine was for dishwasher, right?
Nine was, last year did for us, and carried forward this year because we were like, at the time that we carried it forward, we were talking about getting that scrubber. But in the conversation, we said, we'd get scrubber with the money we have left over for the fence, we never took the nine up.
Right.
So now the nine's there to get taken out. Or, right now, it's still sitting there in my Excel file, waiting to see what you wanna do with the fact that you haven't talked to Superior Restoration Services. You don't know how deep you'll go into the thirty. You don't know if you need the nine or the sixteen, so how do you wanna play all this? This is now, these are the cards.
It's all in the cost center, yeah.
You know, if you wanted the cost center. You don't know where it's gonna hit, so it's spread in between a few lines, it's actually as close as you're gonna get to anything. Um, but how far do you wanna go? Right now, I, I don't think you need any equipment, I don't think you need that nine thousand dollars, I think the capital enhancements you're focused on. Are the PFAS stuff that's in the hundred, excuse me. And for, you get ten in the contingency for that too, so there's a hundred and ten up there in the facility's contingency, so I don't know that you need, you don't have a plan for the sixteen. Now, that being said, at least every year, we don't have to fix something, you know, or realize that you should have done it something. So having something in there, four thousand bucks or something, only makes sense to me.
Russ, do you have any equipment that looked like it was coming up on your list, Bernie? We talked about the roof over there, getting that checked out.
Right.
Um, but you didn't, there wasn't anything that jumped out from.
But we can't use it, it's like start saving money towards like saying. So we need a contingency, so this year is June thirtieth, if you had a reserve. And if something happens and it breaks, you don't wanna say, well, put that in next year's budget, you don't wanna fix it.
No, well, that's why I was gonna ask Russ with, because that's trouble with on his plan, and it was predictable. So that's why I'm curious if there's anything else that's.
That's the inspection and walking around and looking at things and documenting.
Yeah.
Quick recommendation, give you guys something to tear apart, okay? Is uh we've taken the five out of the uh electricity, we have sixty in the uh building maintenance services. Um, I recommend that you then uh put. Zero in school equipment, cause if you don't know, wanna show the budget committee that you knew you didn't need anything to put out, but put. Um, ten in capital enhancement, it's just so it's there, it's a random number, and you speak to that, it's ten thousand bucks, we know we're gonna need something. And we took out, we took out everything else.
They haven't talked about the windows out there and stuff, so that feels good to me.
So we're talking about taking one sixty-one down to zero and one sixty-four down to ten?
Correct, and I have already taken um based on Christians' note. Line one forty-eight from twenty to fifteen.
Yep, okay.
So now you have thirty in contracted services, and you have a conversation running there. Ten in capital improvements that you haven't directly assigned to anything, that's forty work with. And you um. Have that big chunk. Hundred and ten in there, so like maybe PFAS comes out last, might come up places much.
Well, and, but if it, yeah, and I think if we're expecting it to be quite as much, I don't know, we're gonna go up a lot if we.
Now, I did some quick math. Um, the other day, when we were, you know, three of us talking about what happened. And Superior Restoration Services, I was like, what if they sent two people? Cleaning for a week every quarter, right, four times, you get four weeks, two people. And they billed it at forty-five bucks an hour per person. It came out to just under fifteen thousand bucks. So, I would think that for what you have in the budget that we just said. You could probably start to interact with them. And see how it rolled, and watch your spending on other things.
And I think part of it is we put thirty thousand for facility maintenance manager, but that's a little bit the gold standard too, and it's not still getting a lot of time, but we, you know.
I, I would think you need that much time.
No.
If you're working through the visual we discussed, if you're getting these projects done. If you don't have anything else in your capital enhancement line, that has to get done. You can get all, you can sharpen your plans dramatically without spending.
And that's why I feel comfortable that we probably can accommodate both of those new. Services with what you proposed, even with taking the nine thousand and giving that six thousand down to ten. So I think it's, I think it's solid.
I think it's all there, and let's hope that you save even more money on electricity. And you get a couple thousand bucks more out of that, you know, and uh so I think that. I think that when listening to all the things you're stating that you wanna think about, I think the neighbors have that plan. And again, you're. You're still in that position that you've been in historically, and we're trying to move on, if anything really significant happens, you can go back to your path. So this, this is, is, I think that's a solid plan, given the way you're on the budget. But, I'm catching that you may think we need to put on ten in there somewhere. No, I, I think we're probably already made it, I, I got a long budget for the year, but. Fire danger, uh, that we're talking about, and that, that, that. Um, but I don't know what SRS's pricing is yet. Right. Um, and I may have different sense of requirement, I really need to, I think we really need to talk to um. Chuck and Shane. Yep. About to get, they know the building better than anybody. To see if there's more of these to get done, and so, and then um.
I don't know how part of this is, but it's.
The other piece of it is, is I hate it when we keep talking about going back to safety net. I hear you. That just kills me, but, yeah, what I'm, I'm watching here is, is that. You made a huge commitment to the building in, in line. One fifty-six, and in line one fifty-one, and you've already, those are two big commitments.
Yeah.
Looking at the cost center. And. I understand what Sarah means, but she's getting closer to that budget, she gets nervous, because it's a much different environment than. If you all see what we're talking about when we get there, you'll get chewed up quite a bit on every one. So, I think you're going pretty far with what you have in here, and it's responsible to go further. May question the judiciousness of the whole plan.
That's very welcome, thank you.
No, I, I hate it when you talk about that, you know, because I was. I agree.
No, yeah.
Because it gives us a false sense of, of uh security, and but for that fact, we would perhaps write different numbers into this.
No, I don't.
What I would call that, that's catastrophic concern.
When we had our rooftop heater that failed in October or whenever it was. We didn't get bailed out from the Stratton farm. We kept our fingers crossed. No, we didn't, we kept our fingers crossed every single day that that heater in January or February wasn't gonna die.
You volunteered to teach my children.
And it didn't, but it could have, and we would have been stuck with that, it's, it's not a father's task, you still have to go in front of the town, you still have to have a plan, you know.
If I like, set that thing, grow, you know, and earn.
No, I think, I think that's what the, I, I mean, so that's what the selection are after now too, like it's, it's different, yeah. Can I talk to you?
No, I'm sorry.
So, I think that. When we think about this, and when Peter gets us the adjusted numbers. You can say that our budget's going up sixteen percent. But I'd be careful, because I think that the taxpayer impact isn't that high, so I think that when people are. So I think that when people are watching or when people are reading the paper, there's a difference between a headline that says. The budget's going up fifteen percent and self-actual having a large increase, but the taxpayer impact is lower. Does that make sense? No?
Probably a hundred and sixty four questions. That is, I, I'm working to the title, so I understand the, the thought.
I mean, it's just, and, and we're asking, we are asking for a fifteen percent increase, but it's not gonna all come from the taxpayers because some of it. Likely will come from the Stratton Fund, but we not need, what? So we're estimating here that we're putting in a hundred for the PFAS system. And a hundred for specialized reserve fund.
So nearly half of the increase.
So two hundred thousand will not be. And I think, I mean, and the reason why I'm saying that is because that's our, that's our challenge, we'll go to the budget committee, but especially our challenge when we present for the. At town, so.
So you say two hundred thousand will be requested, then when that profit that goes, I'm not familiar with the profit of that at all.
So this year, like, correct, so, I mean, it, and, and this year, which is different from the past, it is part of our budget. Last year, we would have said our budget's going up eight percent, and there's a separate warrant, I didn't request to appropriate. Two hundred thousand from the Stratton Fund, we have to put them together, which is why an explanation. Of the fact that statute now requires us to put any building maintenance in our school budget. Is important because that's something we have to explain for the taxpayers because they're not used to it. Um, so it's, it's really. It's the same money, it's the same needs, but it's gonna look different this year. So we really need to be able to differentiate between what's gonna impact your tax bill when you get it in June or whenever. And what's not. I know, exactly, right?
Well, and then there's also, this is the total budget, and then there's some portion of this that the state pays for.
Yeah, I mean, if you look up at the top.
That's already been. Added into your taxpayer impact and all that. You get a hundred and thirty eight thousand twenty five dollars from the state actually. And you hope you get that much again this year, you don't know that, so I'm gonna read your side, what they're gonna give you.
And that eighty up there.
FY twenty three and FY twenty four went down seven hundred and fifty bucks. I can't tell you what it's gonna end up being when they run it through all their sausage machines, you know?
And Jonathan, when you look at the first book, is between line three and line four, that's what that two hundred thousand dollars is, it's a contribute contribution from the Stratton Fund. Or likely, hopeful approach, contribution from the Stratton Fund. And then that eight hundred, the eighty thousand number is gonna drop to a hundred thousand, do you? For the funding imbalance, is that where we landed?
You're putting your fund balance forward in a hundred thousand dollars. Sixty five less than last year, it's, you only had eighty eight left over at the end of last year, which is an unaudited number. Just my team's number, has to go through the audit. And, um. We should be pretty accurate, but I can't, you know, something, sometimes something isn't good. But, um, but you also had thirty three left at the end of the prior year that we did not advance in your fund balance forward. Cause we didn't want to cut too close, as we also didn't have enough. But we grabbed all that, you just spent thirteen thousand of that earlier tonight, which leaves you twenty more to go forward. So the eighty eight left open from last year, I'm advancing eighty. And adding that the other, you know, twenty that's left from your fund balance from before, we give you a hundred to roll forward. But, and that's pretty consistent with. Where you were in FY twenty three, less than FY twenty four, and you're a little lower for FY twenty five. Excuse me, but that's the number that we don't want to dip down to negative five thousand some year, you know? And that's why you, you don't have a huge margin of error here. Um, but you, but I think that's. You know, if we could, we could maintain that, you almost had a hundred thousand rolling forward, we'd be doing our job pretty, pretty tightly and well. If we ended up next year, you know, you had five hundred thousand dollars left over, it means I made a mistake somewhere. But it, um, but you still have money. You know, it's gonna lower your taxes going into the next year. But what I'm working on right now, with the decisions you made going through here now. I'm gonna double, triple check it for accuracy tomorrow, et cetera. But what I see in front of me, um, based on this work is that, is that. Including the two hundred thousand dollars that you're expending that you didn't before. If you will, spend facilities, you know, reserves. That's gonna give you a fourteen point four four percent expenditure increase, but without the two hundred. It's just six and a half. So you're bringing forward a six and a half percent expenditure decrease.
Correct.
Yeah, your contractual increases, which are at least four and a half percent of them. And I bet you anything that if I take out the secondary's costs for the tuition students, you're gonna see a. Three and a half percent increase on your K A program, which is remarkable. And I will take all that out and present that to the budget committee, because thanks for the city. That while the school budget's going up, okay, so we're gonna spend, we're gonna do some different accounting that we have before, and it's gonna look at the town meeting like there's a fourteen. Percent increase, so that's just because we're doing our accounting properly and talking about Stratton Fund use, and we're actually putting money where it needs to go. Cause our whole school co- committee program of pre-K through twelve is going up six and a half percent. Following a couple of years of significant inflation. But in the program that we have control over, we're operating a building. And we, and we actually kind of control and manage our own expenses at a level, we're only going up, and that might be like three and a half percent. And I think that is a story. That they should understand. And if we can tell that story right at the top. Save a lot of time to get into, well, what about line one fifty two and a half here and this one and that one?
Well, and that's where, I mean, the narrative does it for us before we even have a meeting. So they might have some questions that are then answered in the narrative, but we don't have to discuss.
They might not came back, got like four and a half percent.
Yep.
That's not bad at all.
No, considering what we're doing, or, you know, what this economy's doing.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with it.
I am too.
Do you want to approve a budget then, since I, or is that something that? So the number that I think you want to approve, two million, eight hundred and ninety six thousand dollars. Or eight hundred and ninety six, two hundred and thirty one dollars and seven cents. Two, eight, nine, six, two, three, one, point oh seven. I said that's five cents off.
So are we making a motion to present to the selectmen the fiscal year twenty five budget? Of two million, eight hundred and ninety six thousand, two hundred and thirty one dollars and seven cents?
Sounded like a motion.
Alright, next Tuesday. So will the selectmen have a meeting at six thirty? They probably have to leave here at six, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the transfer station meeting is at six thirty, yes.
So if you can, if there's any chance we can get here at ten and five, like, so we can get the. Yeah, to try and get it done in the hour.
He's going to purpos.
Peter, so we're hoping to get right on, right going at five, because selectmen have another meeting at six thirty, and. One of the budget committee members has to be at this place.
This is on, is it, is it, what day is it? I'm getting here early.
And the selectmen are not.
Here, in here.
You can tell the selectmen, they could have their. Their dump meeting here, then they don't have to drive it.
Yeah, Bristol won't take that bite, but.
Are you ready for me to turn this off? I think you wanna.
We need to make the motion, actually, we're not done yet. But, um, uh, consideration, motion to, for consideration, our contingent public portion of the surface to regular meeting and entrance executive session. For the purpose of discussion of information and confidential records, return it to one MSRA four oh five six F. And for the purpose of discussion and negotiations with support staff, switching version to one MSRA four oh five six B. Second. Motion to go on.